Monday, February the first, 2016. I want to welcome everyone. Somewhere amongst those folks out there, I hope John Hurst is there. Is John Hurst here? Pastor of the Mount Zion Baptist Church. He must not be here. I want to ask that, is there anyone, tonight, of course, this is the beginning of Black History Month, and we got the spiritual heirs who are here. There's gotta be a deacon out there somewhere that can give the invocation.
I'm gonna pay Mr. Bedford 20 bucks.
No, we got one, Mr. Bedford. What you do is if you just give the invocation, then lead us in the pledge, the place to play, everyone please rise, and you go right to that podium right there. That's a microphone right there. I hate to call you on the spot, but...
Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, that came to us. Father God, once more again, we come before your throne of grace as that you bless each and every one of us here tonight. Bless us in a way that we may serve your business and all businesses that concern into this community. Father God, we pray that you will uplift us, put your loving arms around us, protect us down through the years, and always in any blessing that's in your name for Christ's sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Under the mayor's report, we have, the beginning of Black History Month, these guys come every year. I'm gonna get them to come forward at this time, the spiritual heirs. Now, they had this little fellow with them one time. We've not seen him back. He didn't make it. I hope that mic's hot. We got a hot mic, or do y'all need it? If y'all, introduce yourselves. These guys come every year, and this is just, we're not gonna charge anybody any cover for this, but these guys do such an outstanding job, they're invited back every single year, so. Y'all introduce yourselves, so folks will know.
My name is Deacon Alvin Bedford, Smyrna, Georgia, Ryan Hill, from our diverse Baptist church.
My name is Jerry Allen.
I'm William Blunt. I was born and raised here in Smyrna. I'm seven, eight years old now, and I was born right here. A lot of people didn't know we were in this city, but I was born here, and I've been here, still here, live in Rose Garden Circle.
Now, what he's saying is exactly right. Folks, if you were African-American, you lived in the Rose Garden Hills of Davenport Town, and that was it.
That's right.
And, so...
Been here all that time, and my mother was born here, so we've been here. Smyrna is part of our history, and just thank you all that has come by.
We're glad to have y'all, so y'all can take it away.
And this could time next year, we'll be celebrating 60 years of the same gospel representing Smyrna, Georgia. Spiritual day out for 60 years, and most all of us is original members.
All the way, all the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus.
All the way, all the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus.
All the way.
All the way.
All by and by, yeah.
By and by, by and by, yeah.
By and by.
I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus.
All the way, all the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus.
All the way.
All the way.
This right here, where I once was lost in sin, but my Jesus, he took me on, and you know what it did? He shined a light from heaven on my soul. Yes, he did, while he filled my heart with love, 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 when I wrote my name above.
I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus.
All the way.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus.
All the way.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus.
All the way.
Y'all got one more, don't you?
One more.
Just one more, just one more. Can I do one more? Okay, I made them give the invocation, now I'm asking them to do another song. If y'all, if y'all don't wanna do it, then...
All right.
Just one little short one.
See you in the rapture.
I see you in the rapture.
Yes, I see you at the meeting in the...
Oh, thank you, Jesus.
With our blessed Savior, we'll live forever.
Lord, I'll see you in the rapture some sweet day.
If we never meet again on this earth, my precious friend, if to God we have been true, if we've lived above all sin, then for us there'll be a meeting, and there's going to be a greeting, and I'll see you in the rapture some sweet day.
Oh, thank you, Jesus.
See you in the rapture.
Lord, I'll see you in the rapture.
And I'll see you at the meeting in the...
Oh, thank you, Jesus.
With our blessed Savior, we'll live forever.
And I'll see you in the rapture some sweet day.
Item B, under the mayor's report, is a proclamation in recognition of Black History Month. I think Ms. Bluestein has that, and we got some folks here that come, and you present that to them, so...
Yeah, if Ms. Betty and Ms. Lisa and their guest would like to come forward to the podium, I will read the proclamation, and then I'll present it to you. That's a hard act to follow, you know. Okay, a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Black History Month. Whereas each year during Black History Month, the city of Smyrna explores the history and culture of African-Americans, discovering stories of triumph, of the human spirit, and whereas the 2016 theme for Black History Month is hallowed grounds, sites of African-American memories to recognize historic places and prompt us to honor the past, and whereas the Sweet Auburn District houses the birthplace of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Ebenezer Baptist Church, and the burial site of MLK Jr. and his wife Coretta, and whereas the Atlanta University Center, AUC, is the largest concentration of African-American colleges in America, and whereas in 1953, one of the first African-American middle-class neighborhoods in Georgia was built as Rose Garden off of Spring Road in Smyrna, Georgia, and whereas Reverend Thomas Milton Allen, a prominent minister of Cobb County, who was born a slave in 1833, formed the First Association for Black Churches and is buried in the Old Marietta Cemetery in Marietta, and whereas during the U.S. Civil War, African-American slaves built a series of diamond-shaped fortifications called chuppades, designed by Confederate Brigadier General Francis Aubrey Shoup along the Tattahoochee and the Earthen Mounds and the Riverline Historic District, may still be viewed today as a testament to the toil of those men, and whereas the Mount Zion Baptist Church of Smyrna, Georgia, founded in 1877, anchored the surrounding African-American community of Davenport Town, and the remains of the cemetery at Hawthorne Avenue and Old Roswell Road evoke the memories of those families and worshippers, and whereas the lives of those, of these and other African-Americans and the sites of their achievements, struggle, education, worship, persecution, triumph, and empowerment have become hallowed grounds, leaving indelible marks on the memory of individual Smyrnans as well as the collective memory of our country. Now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2016 to be Black History Month, and witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this the first day of February in the year of our Lord, 2016.
Anything y'all would like to say? I'm good.
Well, on February 27th, we will have a Black History program at 7:00 p.m. at Campbell Middle School, and everybody's welcome.
Thank you very much.
Take that with you. Y'all put it in your church.
We have item C, proclamation in recognition of Smyrna history, museum's 30-year anniversary. I know I saw Harold Smith somewhere. Harold, any of your folks, I know Corky Welch is gonna read that proclamation.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Smith and whoever he'd like to bring down with him to... Well, whoever you want to come down, or you can come down by yourself.
I'm a member of the Hysterical Society.
I'm gonna read this from up here, and I'll step down and give it to you down there in just a moment. First of all, I'd like to say, I'm not gonna ask Mr. Smith to sing, because he probably can. He has a lot of talents, and that may be another one that I don't know about. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Smyrna Historical and Genealogical Society. Whereas on April 18th, 1985, the Smyrna Historical Society was chartered for a nonprofit organization after an initial meeting in the original incorporated's former Smyrna mayor Harold Smith and three others, who are all deceased, his wife Betty Smith, neighbor Emma Yancy, and city attorney George Carricker. And whereas the first general membership meeting was held on March 27, 1986, with 18 people in attendance, and the first issue of Lives and Times, the official publication of the society was March 1986, and was continued six times yearly since, and whereas the membership grew rapidly and soon became one of the largest service organizations in Cobb County with more than 300 members and volunteers. And whereas the purpose of the group are to be a membership organization for collection, preserving, and distributing information, photographs, documents, artifacts, and other memorabilia relative to the city of Smyrna and the supporting area, and to establish a museum and research library for its members and general public. And whereas on Saturday, April 25th, 1992, the first Smyrna museum was established in the former Smyrna Health Clinic building at 2858 King Street, thus allowing for the display of historical artifacts entrusted to the Smyrna Historical Society. On April 25th, 1999, the museum moved into a replica of the 1905 railroad station located at 2861 Atlanta Road near the Smyrna Market Village. And whereas the museum houses thousands of area photographs, artifacts, and videos, including oral histories of World War II veterans, long-term Smyrna residents' annuals from most of the Smyrna-area schools, and more than 200 videos of the history from the early 1830s to the present time. And whereas for over 30 years, the members and volunteers of the Smyrna Historical and Genealogical Society, under the direction of Mr. Harold Smith, have preserved, collected, maintained, and made available for public viewing a recorded history of this great city of Smyrna, Georgia. Therefore, I, A. Max Bacon of the city of Smyrna, do hereby recognize Harold Smith's outstanding service and love for his community, and extend to him our gratitude. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this the first day of February in the year of our Lord, 2016. A. Max Bacon.
Harold, I know you're gonna say something. I hope you do.
I'd like to, let me get up here, I guess where you can hear me. I want to thank these folks for coming tonight. We have a hard time getting our old folks out, and unfortunately, I'm not gonna give you a long history, but in the, since 1999, when we opened the new museum, we started out with 45 members, I mean, 45 volunteers over there. That has shrunk because of deaths and a variety of other things, to only one person who actually started in the, with a group that helped us start, that was the Golden K. Kuanis Club. They provided most of the volunteers at that time, and we only have one of those people left in the group, but we still have others that are making donations and that sort of thing, and in fact, we had, even while I was closed over there on Monday, we had some donations came in there today, and it's a wonderful place, and if you haven't visited, it's open every week, Tuesday through Saturday, from 10 till 4, as long as we can keep some live folks moving over there, and we'd like to invite you over. It is absolutely free. You don't have to pay a dime to get in. We like volunteers to put the little cash in the donation jars, and we appreciate that, and that's the way we operate the museum for all of these years. And it's been a good connection that we've had with the city council, and the city of Smyrna, and all the other politicians and other folks in the Cobb County. We appreciate it, we appreciate the recognition for this thing, and thank you very much. And I'm gonna make this suggestion. We have a room full of food over here, so when any of you finish your business here, come over and enjoy some good refreshments with us in the little room over on the side.
I'm afraid we're gonna be there, we come for breakfast.
Thank you very much.
Have for breakfast.
Thanks, Corky.
Thank you very much. I don't know, Corky, while you're down there, thank y'all very much for all that y'all do. We received an award for, from the Cobb Landmark and Historical Society for the Reed House, the purchase of the Reed House, so that was, Harold was there, I think, last week, and pretty nice of him.
As a matter of fact, I recommended to the landmarks that they give you that reward.
Thank y'all so much. Item four is department head reports. Mr. Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be the very first installment of the quarterly department head reports under a new format, and will now be calling each of the department heads up. We have six of them tonight, we didn't have any in, in June, or I'm sorry, in January, and these reports will be scheduled so that citizens can go to our website and see the schedule, so if there's a particular area of interest they have, they'll know which report is coming and in which date. The first person that will be coming up tonight is our clerk, Ms. Terry Graham.
Good evening, Mayor Bacon, council members, Mr. Jones, staff, and citizens. The following is a quarterly report for the clerk's office and court services. The clerk's office completed 58 sets of meeting minutes for 2015 and facilitated 45 meeting agendas. There were 101 peddler's applications completed and 337 open records requests processed. Additionally, over 100-plus combined contracts, agreements, ordinances, resolutions, and annexations were facilitated by the clerk's office. In court services, there were 9,867 cases processed in 2015. 7,428 people appeared in 108 dockets for the year with 3,626 bond forfeitures. Over 4,000 people paid online utilizing our web payment system. Court processed 255 dispositions and 76 webcam requests for 2015. The Smyrna Record Center has been a large project this year with a lot of activity and updates. Some of the highlights are as follows, and the details are listed on your handouts and are on the screen for the viewing public. A plan of action was developed, and we researched other facilities and procedures for comparison. Heather attended records training in anticipation of the overhaul for the SRC, which is the Smyrna Record Center. Last spring, we met with Brockington and discussed in great detail the proper storage of permanent records and collections. A punch list was created of repairs and modifications to complete. We replaced the main entrance door to accommodate an alarm system and a key fob access. The AC was serviced and repaired to maintain the required temperature for storage. The SRC was deep cleaned by a crew. Additionally, storage shelving was built and added to one of the rooms, and PD records were moved into Room 1. Repairs also had to be made to Room 1 and were completed prior to the build-out. An alarm system, key fob, phone line, Wi-Fi, and camera cabling were installed to the SRC, and cameras will be added and active with the city's camera project. Several departments added over 165 boxes to the SRC, and over 250 boxes will be destroyed in accordance to the, with the Georgia Archives retention schedule, with upcoming quarterly shredding dates this year. Special thanks to Dan Campbell and the IS Department for many hours of help with the contractor's installation of the new systems at the SRC. In 2015, I completed training for the Master Municipal Clerk certification, and will be working on my project to finalize my certification. Heather began training for her clerk's municipal certification, and will attend the conference in February in Macon with a scholarship she applied for and received. Laserfish is the city's long-term electronic storage program. Our office has, has had additional training for the software, and has been adding permanent documents, and will continue the scan project through the upcoming year. Emphasis will be added, current, adding current documentation, and then the addition of historical documentation. In 2015, our office assisted with the facilitation of the mayor and council elections, and continues to manage the required state ethics paperwork. In the upcoming month, we will be hiring for the open bail position in court services, and will continue their laserfish scan project as well. We will also be reviewing the companies that handle the bail bonds, and will work with the clerk of court to update any necessary procedures. We plan to continue the SRC project, and will be implementing procedures for proper storage, as well as working with departments to ensure all records are being properly stored, as well as destroyed in compliance with the retention requirements. Heather and I will continue our clerk's training this year. Many of the functions that the clerk's office performs are daily and weekly tasks. Long-term projects will be going, will be ongoing and completed as time permits from regular daily duties of the clerk's office. This concludes my quarterly report, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next presentation will be Community Relations, Ms. Jennifer Bennett.
Hello. My report's gonna be a little bit more visual. Community Relations does a number of things, including events, but for this first report, we're gonna concentrate on publications, website, general update, and some social media stuff, and we'll get to the events with the next quarterly report in April. We're starting out with something new for citizens. It's the new citizen guide. You'll be getting it in your February water bill and in a supplemental mailing. It's got a letter from the mayor on the cover. The inside has contact information for each of the council members, along with some information about how to find out what your ward designation is, if you don't know that. And the back of the publication will have telephone numbers, and also the sanitation schedule for the rest of the year. The plan is for you to keep this handy and refer to it when you need it, especially if you don't go to the website all that often. Following the citizen guide in February, you should be getting the update of the newsletter. That's in March. You would've gotten a newsletter last summer, this is the next edition of it. There will be development updates, events, and other things going on, and then look for your event calendar coming in the April water bill. And that'll cover everything starting in April. Some of the events that start before April will be in the inside spread of the newsletter in March. Also coming is a new look to the city website. We're not quite ready to launch it yet, we're still working on the backend CMS, which is the content management system, which is how we flow information to the website for you. Doing our presentations, we'll be adding that as a feature of the website, too. Some of the more notable pieces of, or updates to the new website include the search feature being fixed. The search feature in the old site, or the existing site, was degraded by something that we had to iframe in, and it took over the Google search component, that's why your feature hasn't been working that well or at all for you, but with this new launch, that feature should be fixed. There's a site map if you need special instruction on how to find places, but keep in mind that this website is still the same structure as before, it's just gonna look a little different, and in some places... It's just going to look a little different, and in some places, we've elevated some information and made the search easier for you. You can switch between the events and the news items on the front page. That saves a little bit of space. And we elevated finance and budget information to the top-level navigation. The navigation itself is going to be much easier for you. I'm about to show you a side-by-side comparison of what that difference is. You'll notice that with the new website, you'll be able to see what's underneath those top tabs, all in one, one view. Let me get this started for you. So on the left is the old website or the existing website, and you see you have to toggle down and over to get to things, and it could take up to three clicks to get to something. With a new one, you can get there much faster. There are also some new features that we'll be making use of for areas like parks and recreation that'll make it visually easier for you to view some of our attributes, especially in parks and recreation. And when, after we launch the new website or as we're approaching that, we can identify some of those for you a little bit more. I'm going to go back a little bit to the cusp of where the summer and fall ended in this last quarter began, and that's Google Fiber. That's a hot topic for everyone. Last October, council approved the three hut locations. So what that means is the process is in the early stage for build-out, but there's no plan yet or no announcement yet about exactly where that will roll out and when. What we do know is that Google Fiber is working faster in the metro area with the nine cities than they have in other cities. That means instead of working with one city and then moving on to the next, they plan to be doing them all together, so it must be, it's supposed to be a much faster process for everyone here. And we'll send you updates when we get those from Google, and I'll try to include those in each of these reports. I thought I'd cover for you a little bit about what we've seen in media coverage for the city in the last quarter. We launched the bike share program in September. That was a good example of how public relations can keep a story going, but we also want to get the story about bike sharing going and have more, more options for you later when it comes to events and options for getting there with bikes. But that, that initial launch was in September, and we are still getting media for it, and we expect to see that reach into the spring. You can see on your screen a few other things that we've had covered. Of course, in the fall, they concentrated on our biodiesel program, the recycling program. Remember that that goes all year, and we'll, we'll remind you from time to time with social media. The bond rating, we pushed that on social media, and it got some pretty good coverage. And that's a good segue into some of the more popular things on social media. And after this slide, I'll explain why I'm showing you most of this. We watch to see what it is you like and what you respond to, and we try to make sure that you get that information. And what we're seeing a lot is that you love information about rankings and community pride. We have social media strength of around 12,000 or 13,000 followers now, but in a single post, we can reach 21,000 people like we did with the Riverview Landing information. We copied over a story from media, and it got shared and shared, and we saw a little bit of that again today. We didn't share the story again, but it's getting a little bit more coverage. It was in the AJC again today. So what we know about you is that overall, you love information about restaurants and rankings. You love the development information, and apparently you really love coffee, too. But what that, what that tells us is what's resonating with you is community pride and vitality, and those are the things that we have been trying to send out to you on social media. It's also one of the reasons why I'd love for you to be following us on social media. You get to hear these things, and you get to share them with people that you know, too. So where do you find us? The website is smyrnacity.com. Facebook is facebook/cityofsmyrnaGA. Twitter is smyrnews. And are there any questions? Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next up, we have from our library, our director, Ms. Mary Moore.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mary Moore. I'm the library director. And normally, I don't include a lot of statistics in my updates, but I did want to take this opportunity to provide you with a couple, just to kind of give you an overview of how well we did in 2015. You can see that we check, we circulated a little over 260,000 items last year, and that includes not just our physical materials, like books and things like that, but also digital materials. We have a wide range of downloadable, not just eBooks, but magazines and movies and music, all kinds of stuff that downloads. But I will point out, as much as we like to think that we're in this digital world and that we consume everything digitally, all of our digital materials only added up to about 7% of our overall circulation. So people still love actual books, which is great for me. Just to put that big number into perspective, it was about a 2% increase over what we had done the year before, which was a nice manageable amount of growth. That's about what you want to see, about 2% or 3% a year. And it was also a nice respite for me because 2014 had seen a 14% increase in circulation, which was very tiring. We were exhausted by the end of the year. So it was nice to see a more manageable amount of growth. But I should say that 2014 was a record high. It was the highest circulation on the history of the library. So 2% above that was another record-breaking year. So we continue to build on that success. The, also, if you look at the bar graph or the, the people who really enjoy statistics, you can look and see that the first two months and the last two months of the year were our most exciting as far as growth goes. I've yet to figure out that out, why? I've been examining our, you know, our growth over the past few years, and I haven't figured it out, but it, that pattern may continue because January 2016 was 5% over January 2015. So we may see that continue. I don't know. I am expecting another 5% increase this year. I think we'll grow faster this year than we did last year because of all of the new customers that are going to be in walking distance of the library down the street. Just to give you an idea of some of the improvements that we made to the physical collection last year, I'll start with just a comment about our Jigsaw Pencil Collection. That was something we actually started at the very end of 2014, and so we spent a lot of 2015 really improving the selection. We have stuff that's, you know, 24 pieces all the way up to 1,000 pieces. So we really tried to have something for every skill level, age, interest in that regard, and almost all of those were donated by our customers. We purchased very few of those. We also targeted our juvenile nonfiction collection. That was something we actually, we identified a couple of years ago that was in desperate need of improvement. We have so many children from area public and private schools that use our library's collection to supplement what, beyond what they get at their school library, and we also have a very large homeschool population that uses us. So we knew that this was a big problem to have such a dated juvenile nonfiction collection. So besides allocating funds from just our regular budget, we pursued a lot of grant opportunities, and we succeeded. The Friends gave us about $1,000 for juvenile history and biography. Wells Fargo gave us $1,000 for financial literacy. Curiosity Creates meant that we could buy art books. And Gas South gave us about $2,000 for STEM resources. We used some of that for books and then some for our Maker Boxes, which you can see on the top right, the picture of the Maker Box. That's an example of one of them. It's a kit that you can check out from the juvenile department that has a book and an activity that go together. And so in that case, you learn about magnets, and then you can actually test with the magnet to see what is actually magnetic. So those are really fun. We also targeted our, just our fiction collections. The Friends gave us $1,000 to replace old outdated and missing adult classics, and the Sharon Darby Foundation gave us $2,500 to buy juvenile fiction, which was extremely exciting to have all of that new fiction come in. It was wonderful. Couple improvements to our digital collections. One was Hoopla, which was an existing resource that we had already had for over a year, where you can download digital audiobooks, movies, and music. Last year, they added eBooks and ecomic books to that collection, and that was a game-changer for us because with one app on your phone or your digital device, you can now download five different types of electronic resources, just with one app. It makes it so much easier for customers to enjoy our digital resources. We still have a lot of bestsellers in eBook and e-audio on our Access 360 platform as well, so we do have answers to that. And then with the, the city made it possible for us to acquire Lynda.com, which was a huge gift for us. We had so much positive response from our customers, and it wasn't just lip service. Over 7,000 tutorials were viewed by our customers last year. So it was a huge success. Just a few program highlights. We, we present hundreds of programs every year, and obviously, I can't talk to you about every one, as much as I'd love to. So I'll just give you a few highlights on that. We presented over 13 adult lectures, for example, like the one on Reed House. We hosted three traveling exhibits, like the one on the Dust Bowl. We had 12 art exhibits in our upstairs galleries. And our community read project focused on The One and Only Ivan by Catherine Applegate, and our theme for summer reading was Every Hero Has A Story. So we really had a ton of fun last year presenting programs and hosting exhibits for all kinds of different ages. Couple of service improvements that I'd like to highlight. We now have Georgia Park passes that you can check out. So what you do is you come to the library, you check out this pass, and it's good for four people, so it's kind of a family pass, four people to get free admission into any historic site operated by the Georgia Park Service. So that's a nice little bonus for having a Smyrna Library card. We also wanted to do something to improve access to our amazing DVD collection. It is really a sort of a jewel of that collection because it is so vast. I mean, we have movie, we have, you know, blockbuster movies, sure, but we also have classics, we have TV shows, we have foreign films. It's really, really excellent collection. So we, we kind of looked at our rules and said, you know, do we need all these rules anymore? Are we barring access to this great collection by having all these rules? So now you can renew DVDs, you've never been able to do that before, and you can put holds on DVDs. So let's say you're looking at our catalog and you see a movie you want to check out, but darn it, it's checked out. Put a hold on it, and you'll get an email when it's available for you to pick up and check out. We also were fortunate to have some CIP funds this year to make some improvements to the interior of the building. This was, this was needed. I mean, there hadn't been a dramatic refresh of the building in some time, and so some things were looking kind of dated. One of the most dramatic improvements, I think, is to the reading room on the first floor. Over the course of a couple of decades, there developed sort of a hodgepodge of five different types of shelving for all the materials in that room, so it looked very chaotic and wasn't a relaxing place to hang out anymore. So by buying one type of shelving that is flexible to accommodate all different types of media, we created a very uniform, relaxing environment. We also had money to reupholster our lounge furniture, so it's really a great room to just browse a DVD or come read a magazine or a newspaper. So come over there and enjoy that room. We also had some money to update some of our work furniture up on the second floor, where all those people go to study for hours and hours on end. So we bought some furniture that does double duty. It's comfortable like lounge furniture, so you can sit and read a magazine up there or enjoy the artwork, or it has these little desks that fold out, and you could sit there, put your laptop on it, and actually do some work. So it does double duty. It's really nice. And you can also see in that picture the beautiful new carpet that we got throughout the building last year. That made such an improvement to the look and the feel of the entire interior of the building. It was a huge difference. I did want to also do a shout-out to the Friends of the Library. They also gave us some money to improve the interior. They gave us some money to add seating to our teen territory, and they gave us the money for the, that display shelf and the two display wall items, so that when you come up the stairs, it's a more refreshed area and more inviting. They also gave us some money in addition to the money we got from community development. Thank you, community development. And the Colonial Dames to buy some much-needed equipment for our genealogy researchers. If you haven't checked out the equipment, please come take a look. It's right outside the Eisenhower Room. Okay, I'd like to highlight a few upcoming events. For example, the lecture this coming Sunday. I personally am really looking forward to this one, The Corner Store and Its Role in African-American Literature. That is this Sunday with Dr. Vaught at 3:00 PM. In March, we've got a walking tour of the historic Williams Park neighborhood. And just in time for strength, for spring, we have author Jonah McDonald coming to talk about all the great hikes you can take in Cobb County. That's in April. And then in May, Nancy McGee will be educating us about the Cretewood families, which were founding families of Smyrna. So I think that's very popular. Lastly, I just want to encourage people to keep in touch with the library. You can sign up for our newsletter if you go to that shortened URL. About once or twice a month, you'll get an email from me about all the cool stuff going on in the library. You can sign up for Next Reads newsletter, which is a monthly newsletter that'll give you suggested reading, and then Facebook, Twitter, and Pinterest, as many of us do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. The, the next report will be our Human Resources Department, led by our director, Ms. Kay Bullock.
Okay, I am here to talk for just a few minutes about what I feel like is the greatest resources we have in the city, our employees. And I want to highlight a few things that I always try to highlight each time I've been here. But over the next three months, January, February, March, we have a number of people that are going to be celebrating some wonderful anniversaries with the city. Some of them have already been recognized, others will soon be recognized. And you will see for January, we had quite a list. We had 20 years, we had Doug Carter from Public Works and Steve Branion from the Police Department. 15 years, we were happy to recognize Paul Vickery from the Public Works Department, as well as Michael Montgomery from Police. 10 years, we had Trey Stevens with Police. Earl Byrd, Parks and Rec. Sherry Lancaster, who is in our Police Department, working in detention center, and Casey Malcolm with Public Works. And then rounding out with five years, during January, we had Marlon Briscoe and Kenneth Durden, both with the Fire Department. Then, starting today, I had the pleasure of going out to the library and celebrating 20 years with Ruth Hayden. It was actually her, her 20-year anniversary today. So it was fun taking her certificate out and a nice cake from McIntyre's, which we're, we've been surprising those with 20 years and more with a little cake as, in addition to their certificates. But we have, coming up this month, we also have for 25 years, Ron Eaton with the Police Department, and 10 years with the Police, Jeremy Lenzing. And then next month is a lighter month for us. In March, we have two people we will be honoring. With 15 years, Dew Farm with the Public Works Department, as well as Stephen Waldrop with the Police Department. Now, just a quick overview about some things that we did in, in HR over the 2015, and I'm, I'm highlighting mostly hiring statistics. We had full-time hires. We hired 75 people. During that period of time, we received over 3,600 resumes. We do all of our applications and resumes online, electronic now, which is a great asset for us to have gotten that online the last two and a half, three years. Those 75 hires came out of 33 postings. Now, I know the question's going to be, if you hired 75, but you had 33 postings? Well, several of those postings had multiple openings. Like at some time, we might have had Police with five or six openings at a time. So that's why you only see 33. And then some of those are ongoing postings that we have year-round. But one of the things that I think makes me the proudest of the city here is, last year, we had 10 retirements with the city. The average service of those 10 people was 25 years. And over, six of those had over 31 years of service with this city. I think the highest one was a little over 41 years. So it is amazing to see the, the longevity we have with our employees, and it just makes me proud to think that people are staying with the city and they, they enjoy what they do, and that this is where they come to, to work and where they want to retire from. So I think that is an amazing statistic for the city to show that we've had that kind of longevity here. I do know of a few, a couple of retirements that'll be coming up in 2016. We don't always know about all of them. Some of them are spur of the moment, some of them are planned out, but I do know of a couple that'll be coming up that have 28 and 30 years of service with the city. Again, it speaks very highly for the people that we've hired and kept on. Now, currently, we have a few positions that are on the website we are currently taking applications for. Controller, Supervisor for Water and Sewer, the Assistant City Engineer, Jail Cook, and Maintenance Technician. Then we also have a number of, of jobs that have already closed that are in various stages of the process, either applicant review process, interviewing processes, background reviews, just a variety of different things. So we have those listed as well, that, for people that might have applied. Those have not been filled yet, they're still in the process. So be patient. When we do fill positions, we do send notifications back out to everyone else to let them know that we have filled the position, so that we don't leave them hanging. And how do you apply? Again, as I said, everything is done online, and you simply go to smyrnacity.com. There's a link that says employment opportunities. It'll show up everything that we are taking at that time. You simply click the, the position of at that time. You simply click the position of interest, and then there will, once you go to that position, there will be a nice little thing that says, "Click here to apply." Takes you directly to our online application. Make sure you have a resume, because we do require resumes for every online posting. But those are easy to upload. You can upload cover letters, any other attachments that you want to. And then, once they come in, we're able to get those out to the department heads. They're able to view those online as well, and start reviewing the applications and the details with it. And then they notify us as to who they would like to interview, and then eventually hire. If you don't have a computer at home, where you do this from home, we also have a computer kiosk in the HR Department located here in City Hall, that you're welcome to come in, bring your resume. If it's just a hard copy, we'll scan it and help you attach it. Or you can bring it on a thumb drive or a disk, and we'll help you attach it as you apply online. So there's no reason why you can't get online to apply, either from home, the library here in City Hall, wherever. But please go out and check out the positions. Stay out there and look at them periodically, and hopefully you can become an employee of the city.
Thank you very much. The final two department head reports both deal with public safety. The first one is the Fire Department, and I'll be presenting Chief Roy Akry. I see our Deputy Chief Marcos is there in the back, but Chief Akry, go right ahead.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. I'm glad you said that, because, you know, one might think that I mandated that Deputy Chief Marcos be here, and to the contrary, he's here voluntarily, which really just kind of confirms my suspicions that he might have a little something wrong with him. But I'm glad a few people laughed. That was intended as a joke, but he does a great job for us. I'm glad that he's here. Well, good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to be standing here before you today as the Fire Chief to talk to you a little bit about what's going on at the Fire Department. First, from our Emergency Management Division, this week across the entire state of Georgia is Severe Weather Preparedness Week. And everybody's used to hearing the first Wednesday of every month, the monthly siren test, as long as the weather's good. We're going to do a little bit different this year. We're going to join all other agencies within the rest of the state, along with the State DMA, and have our tornado drill this Friday morning at 9:00. And we're encouraging everybody in Smyrna, regardless of whether they're at home in their residence, or they're in their business, to take that opportunity, when they hear those weather sirens at 9:00 on Friday morning, to think about where they would go in the event that a tornado warning or a threat were real. So just, you know, some reminders to that. The basement is the best place to go. Not every house, most businesses do not have basements. But a general rule of thumb is, the most interior and lowest place that you can be, typically stairwells, hallways on the lowest floors, those are areas that typically exist within almost all structures. Avoid areas along exterior walls that have windows, obviously, because of the threat of broken glass. And you can also cover yourself with blankets or mattresses to protect yourself in the event debris is flying around. I'm glad to say that our 2015 Annual Report is done from the Smyrna Fire Department. We're going to be able to get those copies to the city administrator later on this week, at earliest, at latest, early to mid next week. And also, after that distribution sometime in the near future, that annual report will be available for view by the public on our website, smyrnacityfire.com. And that's our annual report, and I'm really proud of that. Chief Marcos and a lot of our staff have put a lot of time and effort into that. But I encourage everybody, once we get that online on the website, to go out and take a look at your fire department, because there really is some fantastic detailed information that, obviously, I'm not going to cover tonight. A lot going on with the Fire Department is covered in the annual report. The strategic plan that has guided us for the last couple of years very successfully is scheduled to end in 2016. So we're about to begin the strategic planning process for the one that's going to carry over, from when we decided on a 36-month strategic plan, so from 2017 to 19, to cover those three years. And of course, we will form a committee, a Strategic Planning Committee, that heavily involves external stakeholders. So we're currently seeking interested parties, and that could be individual citizens, business owners, faith-based leaders, just to name a few, but any individual in the city that feels like that they might want to be a part of helping us to formulate our next 36-month strategic plan. It should be some really interesting conversations and debates, and we'll have information, again, in the near future on our website about that process. We anticipate for that to begin probably sometime mid-April. You know, for about the last three or four years nationwide, and especially here in the metro Atlanta area, we've seen a significant uptick in the trending for service demand in general. And even though we're only a full month into 2016, I can tell you that we fully anticipate for 2016 to continue on that upward trend with regard to service demands, primarily centering around emergency response, but also public education, inspections, and community outreach as well. We've recently graduated five of our employees from EMT School, which is Emergency Medical Technician. Those, I understand, are going to be going on to the next level, which is called Advanced EMT. We've got a paramedic class starting for those people who already have their Advanced EMT, which is the final level of certification, medical certification that our personnel get. The paramedic class is going to start in February. Several of our staff have recently completed various national professional qualification standards and certifications. We're proud of that. And, you know, paramedics operate throughout the state of Georgia under the license of a medical director. It has to be a medical doctor. So they're the in-the-field hands, if you will, of that MD. And a few months ago, we welcomed Dr. John Knox on as our new medical director, and we've been very, very fortunate to have Dr. Knox for many reasons. But one, he's a well-practiced and seasoned individual, and he enjoys coming to the stations and working with the paramedics that operate under him, and ensuring that we have the highest level of service, emergency medical service that we possibly can. And we're really proud and fortunate to have Dr. Knox with us. We've also recently finished the Hazard Mitigation Planning Process, which is a county, a comp county, and all cities within the county process. It's a joint process, so it's a countywide mitigation plan. And if you remember, it goes through five-year revisions. This Hazard Mitigation Plan, back in the timeframe of 2005, was what we were able to use to successfully implement some stormwater mitigation, things that we've done here in the city of Smyrna, and that's proven to be incredibly beneficial with helping to reduce areas within the city that traditionally have flooded. So it's an important plan. And finally, we're really excited that the Citizen Fire Academy class is about to start. I say about to start, it's two months away, but I want to mention it because these spots fill up quickly. It's scheduled to begin Thursday, March 31st. And just as a reminder, it's a nine-week program held every Thursday night, and it's really extensive, hands-on, in-depth, behind-the-scenes look at the Smyrna Fire Department. Space is limited to 15 participants, so I would encourage anybody that thinks that they might be interested in this class that begins in March, to, again, visit the website. On the Smyrna City Fire landing page or the main page, you'll see a tab for Citizen Fire Academy, and within that tab, you can find the application. But that is what I had.
Will they be required to come to a council meeting like this?
Probably. They always ask to, though. But thank you.
That's a good program.
Chief Akry, thank you for the presentation. Chief Marcos, thank you for being here. The final presentation is from the Police Department, then we have Chief David Lee here.
I have only 37 slides tonight. No. I'm going to keep it, you know, fairly short and brief, but one of the things I did want to say is, in 2014 compared to 2013, our crime rate was down 10.27%. And then at the end of 2015, we were down again 2.7%. So that's, you know, we're pretty excited about that, especially with, you know, we were being eat-up at one time with a lot of these theft remotes, which really kind of raised our larceny rate. But overall, you know, our crime rate was still down pretty significantly. Some of the things we've been doing in the community, our Master Control Officer, Lewis Defense, has really kind of hit the ground with both feet running. A lot of these HOA meetings he's been attending, he's actually been doing some of our active shooter training, you know, for citizens as well. And as far as you'll see in here, he's done some women's self-defense classes. We've also, one of the things we did, we partnered with Belmont Hills Elementary School. And, you know, we wanted to really do something more than just say we're partners. So we've met with the principal and assistant principal, I think the mayor knows assistant principal out there, Ashley something. But for those who don't know, it's the mayor's daughter. But we're doing weekly mentoring with the children out there. Initially, we were going out there, you know, at lunchtime, even though that was a lot of fun, you always kind of feel like a rock star at those, and attended different functions. But we really wanted to step it up to where we were really doing something that, you know, is a lot better, and the kids are getting so much more out of it. Go to the next slide. One of the things that we've started doing as well, we're getting ready to roll out our First Tee Golf Program. This program was developed by the former Speaker of the House. And we're going to start these programs at Nikajack and at Belmont Hills starting in this month. We, you know, recently had a gun safety class. We always get a good group of people come out for that class. We put out a lot of information, explain the carry laws in Georgia, and give them some good tips. We were scheduled to have our first community active shooter course for the citizens here in City Hall, but the threat of snow, we had to shut things down. But we have the next one coming up this Saturday, February 6th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. We're also starting, we're going to be doing a lot more of this women's self-defense type classes. We have one person who's certified in this particular type of training, and we're getting ready to send two female officers to attend the training as well, so that they're getting the training, not just from male officers, but also from some of our female officers. We do have another Citizens Police Academy starting on March 3rd. We still have one in progress at this time that's due to graduate here pretty soon. You know, one of the things I know Ms. Bullock pointed out with Trey Stevens getting his 10 years, one of the things I did want to point out, Trey was also one of our law enforcement explorers. And that's a program that we continue to this day. You know, the Law Enforcement Explorer Program is a good way for us to reach a lot of the youth. You know, they get to go through, basically, almost like going through a police academy, just on a little bit longer basis. You know, they get to see the interfunctions of what we do, they get some of the same training. But we also get to utilize them on, you know, some of our bigger events for traffic control and things like that as well. So it's kind of a good thing for us, too. It helps us out manpower-wise. But it's also a good training for them to where eventually, you know, hopefully, that they're going to continue their education and then come to work for us at Smyrna Police Department. If you're not familiar with law enforcement programs, it's a great program. I know when I was in high school, in fact, I was a Cobb County Law Enforcement Explorer. But I'm working for the Better Agency now. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Chief Lee, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
That concludes the department head reports for this month, Mayor.
Item number five is land issues, and it's an annexation. Hope these folks still want to annex into the city. They've been waiting 50 years and hours. A 2016-76, Approval of Ordinance Number 2016-01, Annexation Request, 100% Owners, Requesting Annexation, Land Lot 698, 17th District, Parcel 1706980050, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, 2621 Ridge Road, Smyrna, Georgia. The background, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The applicant, Michael Paris, who's, I see him in the front row, or a few rows back, but he inquired about annexation some time ago, and the Community Development Department, the Planning Division, the Clerk's Office were notified, and the city has received a notice of non-objection via email a couple of days ago, and the recommendation is for approval.
This is 100%. Does it require a public hearing? I don't think it does, does it? It's in Mr. Stoner's report. Mr. Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glad to have this annexation to city. This was a piece of property that was kind of an odd piece out there, and from a native Smyrna, and someone we all know, Michael Paris, and it was his grandparents' home, and we're glad to have it in the city. So I'd like to make a motion that we approved ordinance 2016-76.
Second.
Question, second, to approve this requested annexation. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 70. That took 30 seconds. Well, actually, one hour and 6 minutes and 30 seconds. Thank y'all so much. That's, I actually grew up with Michael. He's, see how big he is? He said that. I used to beat him up when he was a kid. We might have thrown some rocks at him, but thank y'all so much. You'll get your tax bill tomorrow. Just in time for the city Thank y'all very much. Item B, 2016-74, is Approval of Ordinance 2016-02, Annexation Request, 100% Owners, Requesting Annexation, Land Lot 519, 0.4234, Acre Parcel Number 17051900750, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, 1276 Pierce Avenue. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, Kimberly Norwood Properties inquired about the annexation earlier this month. The notifications for the annexation have been sent, and we have received a non-objection letter from the county, and recommendation is for approval.
I don't know if there's anybody here with that property. Ms. Tara Nullwich, her district.
Yes, thank you. This lot is currently part of one of the larger unincorporated islands that we have in Ward 3, so I'm happy that with this annexation, that island will be a little bit less large. So at this time, I would like to move to approve item 5B. It is 2016-74, Approval of Ordinance 2016-02, which is the annexation request with 100% of owners requesting annexation of Land Lot 519. It's a 0.4234% of an acre. It's parcel number 17051900750 in the 17th District, the 2nd Section of Cobb County, 1276 Pierce Avenue in Smyrna, Georgia.
A motion, second, to approve this annexation request. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 70. And just for the record, that A will be part of, become part of Ward 6, I think, at the time, and this will be part of Ward 3. Is that correct? Okay. All right. Item C, V16-002, it's a public hearing. Appeal the denial of the License and Variance Board for Variance Requests of V16-002, Allow Increase in Wild-Sign Area from 40 square feet to 99 square feet, 2.83-acre land lot 377-2781, South Cobb Drive, TNT Store, LLC, David Beatty. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The License and Variance Board reviewed the application for this request on January 13th, and voted unanimously to deny the application. And the same folks are here for item D, and I presume that we probably need to take these separate.
Yes. Is an applicant here? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning... like to make any public comment concerning this variance request for this issue? Okay, I'm going to get to Mr. Cochran, whoever needs to be sworn in at this time, and for record, there was no opposition, so please step forward and be sworn in. If you're going to make any testimony.
Sure.
Any testimony, you got to be sworn in right now.
Pardon? Are these guys going to testify? I don't think so. Yes.
Okay. This is in Ms. Susan Wilkinson's district, I'm not sure if it was a presentation, but it's Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, who will speak first about this issue, Joey or the applicant? Or Ken? Oh, okay, Ken. Okay, thank you.
This is normal, we usually make a presentation, and then tell everybody what it's about, and then we, and you'll have your time, okay?
Yeah, the purpose of staff doing a quick presentation here is just to orient everybody as to what's going on. Given what Mr. Jones has already announced, it is, has been requested to move from the LNV part up to mayor and council for consideration of a variance that has to do with signage. Just to orient you, this is the old Piccadilly site, it's outlined in red on South Cobb, you know, it's currently a vacant structure. TNT here is a fireworks sale and storage, the existing zoning is GC. The use is permitted, so this is not a question, normally you see me up here with a zoning issue when we're talking about use issues, this is not a use issue, this is strictly a signed request. This is an aerial showing some of the surrounding properties with building distances from the property line, based on the maps that we have, and you can see that setbacks range from anywhere from 50 feet from South Cobb to 100 feet. The Piccadilly is approximately 80 feet from the right away. This is the existing site plan. As part of their actual submitter for the permits, they had to, are having to relocate their handicap spaces, their ADA requirements, and so they're moving those from the side of this building to the front of the building. And this is indeed the sidewalk perspective on how the building looks. This is the existing elevation with their proposed sign on it, and then the proposed elevation below, and there are a couple changes to the building, and I'll use fly-ins to bring those to attention, that came to our attention when they submitted for their actual plan review. They are relocating the front entrance to the center of the, of the front wall, they're changing the placement of the tinted, changing placement of those tinted windows and replacing them with clear windows, and then they're actually adding additional windows which will be clear, that area currently is a solid wall on that. And then I've already mentioned the relocation of the ADA spaces. This is a view of the property, you can see to the far right, just the corner of the building, but you're looking north up South Cobb, then you're looking south.
Ken, just so folks will know that this is the form of Piccadilly.
Yes, it is, it is the form of Piccadilly, absolutely. Now, the code sections that are applicable here have to do with that a roof sign is precluded by our ordinance, as well as what the requirements for the signs are, which in this case is a maximum of 40 square feet, as well as, you know, how our ordinance defines what a wall sign is as well. Those are the sections that we have referenced in the report. In the staff analysis is, we at staff level, and it was accepted by License and Variance Board, because staff had recommended that the request be denied as well, was that we didn't find that the circumstances were unique or extraordinary to the subject property. There's other properties out there that have similar, and in some cases, greater setbacks on that. Again, the denial of this doesn't deprive the property owner of a reasonable use of the property, they're still allowed to have signs, we're not precluding those signs, we're just saying they can't be on the roof. They also are, said they would put in a freestanding monument sign, which would be the code, which would end up being 8 feet from the street grade with 32 square feet of area, that's what the ordinance allows. They also wanted to, you know, there's two parts here, and the mayor had said, you know, we would have two votes on that, I'm just going to present all of that as one presentation, but that they wanted not only the sign on the, on the roof, but also to increase that from the 40 feet that I had mentioned to 99 feet on that. Community development also doesn't believe that, believes that the applicant has created a hardship to some degree, because he is reducing the amount of the wall space by putting in those additional windows that I had pointed out earlier with that. So, as I mentioned, both recommend, the recommendation from staff was a denial on having the signage on the roof, as well as an increase in the sign area, as well as the License and Variance Board heard their request on January 13th of this year, and voted 3 to 0 to deny the request. At that, after that meeting, they went through the requirement of appealing that decision to you, and that's why we're here tonight on that. I'm happy to answer any questions, I know they're here and can answer questions as well. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe you have a presentation as well, that, that they gave us a flash drive for.
If I have any questions, Ken? At this time? Okay.
Okay. That's Joey.
Mayor, if I can just say that, Ken, are you kind of contemplating hearing both of the zoning requests in one hearing, but then having separate votes?
Yes.
Is that okay with?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we take separate votes, and they have the.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's why we're here to speak.
So, the testimony offered will be offered for both issues on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Ken, I'm sorry, is there an existing sign, a street sign advertising this business?
When you say a street sign, you mean a monument, you mean like?
Yes, there's a monument sign out there at this point.
No, I mean, there.
It was.
Excuse me, there is a proposed monument sign that, what they have submitted to us, we've worked with them, and it will meet the code requirements.
So, is this in addition to the monument sign, or substitute for the monument sign?
No, it's in addition to. The ordinance allows any business to have both a monument sign, if you're a freestanding, you can have a monument sign, and you can have one on the building.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, one further question. 8212 says no roof signs, period.
Correct.
In the city.
Correct.
And that's consistent across the city?
Well, it is consistent since that requirement has come in, there, obviously, there's.
Were grandfathered in.
There are signs that are indeed grandfathered in.
But, no new permits have been offered for rooftop signs in quite a while.
That's correct, thank you.
I have a question, Ken. The monument sign, our ordinance allows it to be 8 feet, but you, you measure it from the?
You measure it from the street grade.
The street grade.
As opposed to, say, the parking lot. There is a slight drop to this lot of several feet, so that it will, technically, from the base on the parking lot, it'll probably be more like 12 feet, but we measure from the road level to accommodate people that have, have topographic issues that drop down on that, so it meets our requirements.
Yeah, let me make sure that we're, but right now, we're talking about the wall sign, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, the issue of the monument sign is not, I mean, they have met that requirement, and if you looked at the application, originally, they had asked for a monument, but after we reviewed it and worked with them and talked to them about what was going on, they didn't need that variance on that, so that was taken out of the report, but it still shows up in the application.
Okay. Any questions to Ken? Okay, applicant, step forward and stick in your thumb drive or whatever it is.
It's already there, I just don't know how to access it. Joey's going to help me here. Here we go.
Hey, where's my little, oh, just, okay. Mayor, council, thank you for having us here tonight and giving us this opportunity, and I want to say that the staff members here that I've met in all departments are professional, helpful, and, and you ought to be proud of the staff members that you have here. Now, as far as the sign ordinance is, we're a little at odds on opinion, I guess, but, but that's, that's what this is for. Smyrna has a sign ordinance that has flexible sections, and.
For the record, will you tell us who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, I am David Beatty, and I'm with TNT Fireworks.
Got it.
Need to know anything else?
I don't know anything, that's good enough.
Okay.
Unless you want to tell us something.
No, gosh, no, it wouldn't be interesting. There are, as I was saying, you have flexible sections, and you have one-size-fits-all sections in your ordinance, and one-size-fits-all portions apply to us. Because it's understood by their very nature that one-size-fits-all ordinances can produce unfair treatment of some businesses or individuals, Smyrna has fairly and justly provided for a variance procedure, which in fact, has been successfully used in the past. To obtain consideration of a variance request, the request of various must meet four conditions, extraordinary or exceptional conditions, whether the hardship is self-created, does it comply with reasonable use standard, and is the request the minimum necessary? And regarding the size going, we're asking that the, the sign be increased from 40 square feet to 99 square feet. Regarding the extraordinary and exceptional conditions, facility setback is, is back farther from the travel lanes than all but one of its neighbors, and, and that neighbor is in fact, a small car lot, which has a lot of cars out in front of it, and flags, which in fact, impede the view of our, our property coming from the south. And, and, and I assume they wanted their, their building back further to allow for parking in the front. And the property is, is, as Ken said, it's very low relative to South Cobb, to its neighbors. Coming from the north, it's, I know my son is 6 feet tall, I had him stand out there and took a picture, and you could see the road well over his head, and we weren't near the north end where it is higher, but there are topographic challenges, and at least some setback challenges. And having, you all having lived here forever, you probably know right where it is, me having not lived here forever, I got to look for it every time I come here, and I'm kind of waiting and waiting and waiting, finally, coming from the south, I've watched for those flags at that, that little car lot, and that helps me find it. The overwhelming majority of our customers will be coming from outside of Smyrna, and they will be shopping with us only once or twice a year. A larger, more visible sign will enhance our visibility and thus, traffic flow and safety. I mean, when you're looking for somebody's sign, you know, you're not, you don't have your eyes on the road, and, and let me show you. This is what is legally allowed, this is in proportion to what is legally allowed on that building right now. And the perspective of that 40 square feet on the building, which is much larger than any of its neighbors, is, is material out, materially out of proportion, and is, kind of looks like a postage stamp on a football field. As to whether the hardship is self-created, the building was built in the early 80s, we had nothing to do with that, the topography was created by natural forces, and the road height relative to the property was not in any way set by us. And does our, does our request meet reasonable use standard, so can our property be reasonably used? You know, and that's, that's, can be determined in many ways, but different people, however, if you, if, given that reasonable signage is critical, and it is, for the success of any business serving the public, I think our request is reasonable and necessary. And if you consider the sign ordinance and determine reasonable, the reasonableness of this use, you can go to section 8215 for the planned shopping centers, and fascia signs, wall and fascia signs, sizes are dependent on setback and building length. Since the ordinance for us is a one-size-fits-all, whether equitable, equitable or not, it takes a variance granting by you to cure an unintended unfairness. By the way, it's my understanding that if we had another business in this building with us, we would be able to, according to 8215, have signage equal to somewhere around 254 square feet, or six times what's allowed in the ordinance. And, so in that light, I think 99 square feet is reasonable, given the topographic challenges that this site is encumbered by, and here's what, that you think, well, that's not much bigger, but it makes a big difference, and you can see, going back to what's allowed and coming forward to what we're asking. Is the request minimum necessary? We feel it's minimal and reasonable, is, it's the absolute minimum size that is in reasonable proportion to the rest of the building itself, and we put all sorts of sizes on there, and that was the one that was the smallest that we felt like met that. Now, staff has recommended against the increase in, in size, and, and they've pointed out that we have a monument sign, we have a red roof, and this is in a write-up that they sent me, we have available window signage, and we have temporary signage available, but that's not what we're here to talk about, we're here to talk about, about a bigger wall sign. We meet all four criteria for consideration, and, and there are circumstances where the city should grant variances, and in fact, has, so we will not be setting precedent for the first people to ever get a sign ordinance variance. Moving on to the, moving the wall sign to the roof request. This is the building as it was previously, and you all probably remember it, I don't know that I'd ever seen it, but this building was built for roof signage, it was designed for roof signage, and it had two roof signs, one on the front middle where I showed that one just a minute ago, and one on the, on the south end of the building.
But, are those both the same size?
I think the one, it looked.
One might be a little smaller.
Looks like the one over on the south side might be a little smaller, but I don't know. But, they are quite a bit larger than the one that we are, are requesting. Here, here is, we superimposed our wall sign on the wall, and my car happened to be parked there, I took a picture of it, and, and that's what we would have, or could happen for a wall sign. That roof. That roof line is eight feet off the ground only, and it is nowhere, is it, is it over eight feet off the sidewalk? Yes, we put some more windows in, but this, this area is still available, and this was where we would put the sign anyway, if we had to put it on the wall. And at the other end of the, of the windows that we put in, so we didn't create, we haven't created this problem. It's, it's the height of the wall that has created this problem. As we stated previously, we feel like that there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions, and that is that the building was designed and engineered to have sign located on this awning roof. And according to historical pictures, which we just saw, that's where they have been historically. And again, the overwhelming majority of our customers will be coming from outside of Smyrna, and we want them to be able to see the sign. And the cost of re-engineering and rebuilding the building to accommodate a wall sign, I feel like would be an unreasonable financial burden. Were the hardships self-created? No, it's, the building structure has been in place since the 80s. The topography is a result of the general lay of the land, the height of the road to the relative location was set by others. And again, though we propose adding additional windows, there's plenty of wall space for the signage still. Reasonable use to be considered, we feel like that, I mean, you can look at our, at our car there in front of the sign. We've got to go up to have reasonable use, or give away parking spaces, and we're going to use those parking spaces, where I made a terrible judgment in selecting the sign. As to whether the request is the minimum necessary, it's, it's, I cannot come up with, with any other request that makes any sense, other than spending a whole lot of money. So the staff at the, at the previous meeting, I thought, made our case for us. On January 13th, they stated in writing at the original variance hearing, that it would take a roofline modification to attain reasonable use, or to accommodate our use. By their suggesting the modification, they basically said the building as built cannot be used to mount a wall sign that does not deprive the applicant of reasonable use. I was sent another document, Mr. Staub sent me another document that, that had the, apparently, the staff's thoughts, and Ken went over some of those, and it was suggesting all kinds of other reasons why we don't need to move the sign to the roof, while continuing to ignore the fact that parked cars will, will hide a wall sign. And that actually seems to make, to make our case stronger. They gave several mitigating factors, but they were, that our roof is red, that's not, that's not in question here, or that we want to make it red. They said that the signs were taken down as required by section 8210, non-conforming signs, when in fact, I'm sure that the signs came down because the restaurant went out of business, and if the restaurant was still there, the signs would probably still be there. Staff wrote up that we have temporary signage that we can use, and we can, and it's generous, but it's not an issue here. And there was a document I saw that mentioned window signage, which, incidentally, we're not interested in window signage. We want people to be able to see in the building and, for a variety of reasons, but one is people are more likely to come in where they can see in. They further suggested we could rearrange the handicap parking to where it would never be obscured, but I don't know how that happens. I mean, those vans are bigger than, than my vehicle there. There are walkways in between them, but people don't drive to a certain point and look for a sign. They drive, they look for the sign while they're driving to the place.
Mr. Beatty, will you-
Sir?
Tell us who TNT, about your company, I mean-
TNT is the, the leading fireworks company in America. We're the largest fireworks company in America, perhaps the world. We're also in Hong Kong, China, and the United Kingdom. The Andersons started TNT Fireworks decades ago. Mr. Charles Anderson started the business along with his father, and his son is the CEO today. The kind of people that the Andersons are, Mr. Anderson was awarded the Horatio Alger Award this year, which is, which is given to about, I'd say, 15 or 20 people a year in the world. They are fine corporate citizens. They are fine people. They are wonderful people to have associated with your city. They founded and took public and then took private books a million. They took Hibbett Sports public. They have many other businesses, and and like I said, they are wonderful people and will make great corporate neighbors here, and-
So you've done your homework on this and selecting this site and-
I have. It's not the best site in the whole Atlanta area, but it's, it's a good site. It's, it has its challenges, and, you know, and, and Mr. Mayor, I'd say the most poignant precedent set regarding this property is it's been unused for somewhere between five and 10 years. I've had a staff member here at the city tell me he thinks it's closer to nine. I've had other people say it's been five or six. Now, it had a Halloween thing in it once. It's had a, they tried to do a kids' thing, but it's been sitting open. It's, doesn't seem to have too many people interested in it. It's fallen into disrepair. It has termites in it, active termites now. It has rotten wallboards on the outside, the roof's peeling, has broken areas in the parking, and you probably noticed the vegetation has become completely overgrown and unmanaged. We'll be investing, I'd say, somewhere around a half a million dollars at least in, in the property and paying rent. Additionally, we provide fundraising opportunities for local school support groups or nonprofit groups, and in fact, in, we had one in Cumming this past year, a soccer group, and in conjunction with the South Forsyth County Band Boosters, raised well in excess of $30,000 in four days. It's a pretty good, pretty good fundraiser for, for groups. Soccer does not get a whole lot of funds. And like I said, we'll be great neighbors. We'll contribute to the community in many ways. I think we meet the requirements for the variance, and let's see if I've got any more pictures here. No, I don't. Do you have any questions, I mean?
Mr. Wilson?
I'd like to ask Council a question first, or maybe Ken said there's one. If we were to support this, could we make the stipulation, and then I'll ask you the question, Mr. Beatty, could we make a stipulation that if this is approved, it is in lieu of window signs?
Yeah, you could condition a grant of a variance if you chose to do that. Do it by either condition outright or by agreed upon stipulation.
Mr. Beatty, would that be acceptable to you?
Are you giving us both of them? The size and the-
Well, I'm saying, if, if indeed we were to give you the, the roof and the size, would you take that in lieu of the window signs?
Yes, sir.
I have a comment to make. I was just noticing in your pictures of the Piccadilly, and the sign is bigger, but I also didn't see a monument sign out there. So I guess I'm just thinking that maybe, yeah, I see why they, did, was there a monument sign when the Piccadilly was there?
It was, and you can, if you go over there, you can see where it was. It's been knocked off the base. It looks like it's been run over. It's right by the veterinarian sign. It's where the wiring comes up out of the ground. That's all that's left. I don't think it was a monument sign. I think it was some sort of a pylon sign. Am I right, Mayor?
Okay.
I know, but I mean, she was asking about what was there. I don't know, but it looks like that's what it was.
It was a big sign on that, on that roof.
Pretty big sign.
That's when we found out they were leaving, is we saw them driving down the road with the signs. Where they going? Oh, they closed down? You're kidding. I know it's been vacant for a long time.
Has been vacant for a long time. We will be a good use for that building. We, you know, I'm, I'm sure you'd rather have somebody else, but we're good, like I said, we're good corporate citizens for, goodness sakes, our chairman emeritus just won the Horatio Alger Award this year. That's, that's pretty special.
I mean, these are, this is, used to be a seasonal thing, New Year's and 4th of July, and now, due to the state, it's kind of this great idea. Everybody can shoot fireworks whenever you want to.
We're probably going to keep this one seasonal. We have, keep a long season in the summer. We open before Memorial Day, close down after the 4th of July. There are other holidays that merit opening, New Year's, between Christmas and New Year's in particular, or just before Christmas and New Year's. Honestly, Diwali has become a pretty good time for us now, and that is the festival of lights, for the Hindu festival of lights, and it happens in October, November. But as far as staying open every day of the year, that's probably not in our plans.
You're currently out on Spring Road now, right?
Pardon?
You're currently out on Spring Road?
No.
That's not you?
No, sir.
You're kidding?
That's Brand X.
Brand X. Mr. Beatty, I wanted to follow up to the mayor's question.
Yes, sir.
Trying to understand the business model. So you're only open seasonally, so what will the building house, or what will the building look like when you're not open for business on a daily basis?
Typically, it's just, we keep the exterior lights on, you know, for security, and-
Product stored in the building?
Sure, sure, always. We do that in every jurisdiction. We don't take the product out. It's, that's, that's onerous. It's, it's tough. We do it in one, but it's because we can only rent it, it's for blocks of time.
Trying to grasp, once you make the roof red, why a sign would even be necessary, because it will be seen from quite a distance.
It'll help, it'll help. The green, but you know, surprisingly, and maybe, you know, when I, I see it with a red roof, I'll go, oh, now that's better, but people don't know they're driving to a red roof building typically. We'll send them a catalog.
As you can imagine, we've wrestled with sign ordinance in the city for some time, and we actually went through a process, got some input, and so we got to a point where we have, you know, a community interest statement that is in the ordinance now, so that's what we're looking for, is to try to make sure we're consistent.
Well, and I appreciate that, and you could, you could make this applicable, the only buildings that have been out of use for five years or more, and would fit there. I mean, it's, it's not a great building. It's, it's in decent shape. It's not in great shape. It's going to cost a lot of money to fix, but we're willing to give it a shot. If it doesn't work out for us, you're going to have a lot better building when we leave for somebody else.
Another empty building.
Oh, well, we're planning on staying, though. We got, we got a 20-year lease on it.
I had a quick question, if I can, of Ken, concerning our ordinance on temporary signs. So, just so clarification, so how long can you have temporary signs and?
The ordinance is set up to allow four 30-day periods for temporary signs, and within that, then there's different types of signs that you could use. You could have a banner, or you could have flags, or you could have feather signs. I mean, there's several options there. So you can do it four times a year. A permit is required, and you can choose. If you want to do them four consecutive months, you can do that, then you're, you're finished for the rest of the year. If you want to do it once a quarter, you can do that. If you want to do it around special events, you can do that. It's just, we cannot issue a permit beyond 30 days nor beyond four times a year.
So 120 days total a year is what you're saying?
Right.
So you have to get a permit, in other words, four times. Is that my understanding?
Even if they do back-to-back-to-back, they still have to come in and get four different permits.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Ken, what does the cops get a temporary?
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. Thank you, Joe. I went blank there for a minute. $100, $100 per cycle, per permit, per cycle.
Ken, I have a question. I think we heard about the, the sign ordinance and the people that came up with it. Can you tell us a little bit about the, the people that were part of that group that, that came up with these, these options?
Yeah. Just so that everybody understands what I, what I think your question is, Ms. Wilkinson, is the city's had a sign ordinance for years, but several years ago, probably three or four years ago, it was agreed that we needed to do some updating with, with our temporary sign section, and as a result of that, a committee was put together that did consist of business owners, as well as other, we had a commercial sign maker on the committee as well, as well as staff and so forth. And basically, over, over the period of nine to 12 months, we met multiple times and went through different options, and ultimately came to the current option that we have today, where it was four times a year, it was a 30-day cycle, there are different options you have that would qualify for temporary signage. And then that was presented to Council, and Council adopted that, so I think that's probably the section you were referring to.
Any questions of Ken or the Africa? Any other comments you'd like to make?
No, sir.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you. I do have a question, another question for Ken, because I'm, I'm just comparing the sign and the, what the applicant's asking for as far as putting it on the roof. And I know that, I think they're going to be building a monument sign also, and you said that it was going to be, I know our ordinance says eight feet, but you measure it from the road, so it'll be taller than that, and I think the square footage of the sign is 30, 32, two square feet?
Now, that's for the sign face, the sign area, not, not the, you know, not the volume of the sign, but, but the actual face where the letters are.
Okay, and then the actual sign with the additional height will be larger than that. That'll just be the area where the type is.
Well, it'll be, it'll be taller than eight feet.
Okay.
But that's not, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, what is proposed is permitted under the ordinance.
Sure, and I understand that.
So that if you stood behind the sign, yes, it may be 12 feet from, from the ground up, but since we measure from the road, that's, that's where the eight feet comes in. But the area, the actual sign face, it's still just 32 square feet. They are not asking for any increase in that face.
Okay, thank you.
How did I compare with the sign next door to it, at the animal clinic?
The animal clinic at one point was a pole sign, and the current sign, it met another section of the ordinance. Because there is a change of ownership, they qualified, first, they triggered the requirement that they had to do something with the sign, and there's two choices. Either you remove the sign and you put in a monument sign, or because of an amendment we had made to the ordinance years ago, you can reduce the size of that pole sign by 30% and the area by 30%. Now, I don't remember exactly how tall that sign was at one point and how big the area was. Now, I don't remember exactly how tall that sign was at one point, and how big the area was. But what's there today met both of those 30% reduction requirements in order to exist.
Ken, I have a quick question, too. Isn't it also after so many years, if a business is closed, and as we have no operating business in there, that basically the grandfathering of whatever you have disappears? Is that correct?
Yes. It, there's, if you allow me, I will also take your question a tad further.
Right.
On the signage issue, once a business closed, they have so many months to remove the sign on that.
Correct.
So what staff was saying was that not only was the sign gone, but that's, yeah, the business closed, and therefore it was required to move that, so that there's, we couldn't put it back up, because they had lost their grandfather, because indeed the business had gone out.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Beatty, Ken, if indeed there was an immediate renter coming to take over this space, would they have been able to keep the sign?
Only if it was a restaurant. If it was the same use, there, that would have been potentially possible, but, you know, none of that trick was true.
Okay. Mr. Beatty, can I, can I ask you a quick question? I'm just assuming that you intend to take advantage of the temporary sign.
Yes, sir, not, not four times, but we will.
I would, too.
And...
I tend to agree with you. The, the small sign is somewhat out of proportion when you look at it on the, on the side of the building. And I rode down South Cobb Drive this, this past weekend, and, you know, when it first came up, there was discussion about the red roof. And every fourth building on South Cobb's got a red roof on it, it seems like, including a building here that one of our council members used to own. So, I mean, there's a lot of red roofs on that, on that road, and I don't think that's an issue to me anymore.
Let me say one thing. This has nothing to do with tonight, but it might have something to do with your comfort with our use. If we took that building and stuffed it full of fireworks and got all the air out, and, you know, put that much fireworks in there and set it on fire, it would not blow up. This, they're not a mass detonation hazard, period.
I bet it'd be fun to watch.
But it'll be a heck of a fire, so, but your, your fire department is, is well-trained to handle that. So anyway, that's just a point of interest.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Well, at this time, I would like to move to deny the variance request for item 5C, V16-002, which reads the appeal, the denial of the license and variance board for variance request V16-002 to allow increase in wall sign area from 40 square feet to 99 square feet on 2.83 acres, landlot 377-2781, South Cobb Drive, TNT Stores LLC. Thank you.
Motion and a second to deny, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's denied, five to two. Second item on the agenda is D, which is V16-003 Public Hearing Appeal, denial of the license and variance board for variance request V16-003, allow wall sign on the roof, 2.83 acres, landlot 377-2781, South Cobb Drive, TNT Stores LLC. Dave Beatty. We've already had the public hearing portion of that, is that correct, Scott? Mrs. Wilkinson.
At this time, I'd like to move to deny item 5D, V16-003, to appeal the denial of the license and variance board for variance request V16-003, allow wall sign on roof, 2.83 acres, landlot 377, or 2781, South Cobb Drive, TNT Stores LLC. Thank you.
Have a motion? And no second? All right, Ms. Blue Seen's second, okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, five to two. I can't see who voted for it, against it. I guess it looks like, there you go. Mr. Wilson, Mr. Fennell voted against the motion, so that's approved, five to two, to deny. Item 6 is previous licenses, we have none. Item 7 is formal business. A is RES 2016-03, authorize the acquisition of real property by all lawful means for improvements to Spring Road. This authorization includes adopting a resolution and declaration of taking for a portion of the property located at 3103 Sports Avenue, and authorizing the mayor to execute such documents, and all other documents indicate an incident to this acquisition. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, this is in support of the Spring Road's loss project that the city has bid just a few weeks ago, and construction on that project is imminent. This will be for the addition of a third lane on the westbound traffic of Spring Road between Highway 41 and Bell Road.
This is Ms. Nudelwich. Wait, hold on. Nope, do we do the, this is B, this is Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is pretty straightforward. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7A, RES 2016-03, to authorize the acquisition of real property by all lawful means for improvements to Spring Road. This authorization includes adopting a resolution and declaration of taking for a portion of the property located at 3103 Sports Avenue, and authorizing the mayor to execute such documents and all other documents incident to this acquisition.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As I have stated in the past, when we do public takings of property, I have concern with the use of eminent domain. My satisfaction on this one has been met relative to the public use of a public road that is not taking any more than the necessary land to perform the expansion and sidewalk capabilities. So with that, I'm going to support the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, seven zero. Item 7B, under formal business, 2016-88, authorize the city to exchange a portion of property owned by the city located at 2975 and 2925 Atlanta Road for property determined by appraisals to be of greater or equal value owned by Halpern Enterprises located at 2552 South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia. Approve the values determined by the appraisals, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary for this transaction. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, this site has been sitting idle since, I think, 2007. And this is one of the final steps toward the redevelopment of the Johnquill site. And that's at the intersection of Spring Road and Atlanta Road. The property was recently rezoned to a mixed-use development, which will include a Publix. And in an effort to meet the commitments for that Publix, the full-scale development of the site will begin very soon. The city, as you know, owns two remnant parcels that are adjacent to that site, and will be included in that development. Simultaneously with that, the city is also constructing Glendale Boulevard from South Cobb Drive near Windy Hill Road as part of the Smyrna Grove project, or will terminate at the front of Smyrna Grove project.
Old Concord.
It's a long old Concord, thank you. And as part of that project, the city has to acquire several projects, several properties of land. And Halpern owns part of those properties, and Halpern is also the developer for the Johnquill track. The, the exchange, we will be exchanging part of our property with Johnquill, and that's on a dollar-to-dollar ratio. The properties have since been appraised by state-certified MIA appraisers, and the city attorney has worked on this quite a bit. And if you have any detailed questions, I'm happy to take them or to further the attorney as appropriate.
This is in Ms. Nudelwich's district.
Yes, it is. This is one of the final pieces of the puzzle that needs to come into place for the Johnquill Plaza development to come. And it's an aggressive timeline that Halpern is, is going to be taking with, with regards to developing out this property. We've been waiting eight years plus for something to happen, and now a lot's going to happen within the next year. So I'm excited that we can get this settled tonight. I think it's going to be beneficial not only to residents in Ward 3, but also to residents in Ward 5, because it's going to help spark the rejuvenation that we've been working very hard for along the South Cobb Drive corridor. So with that said, at this time, I do move to approve item 7B. It is 2016-88, which authorizes the city to exchange a portion of property owned by the city located at 2975 and 2925 Atlanta Road for property determined by appraisals to be of greater or equal value owned by Halpern Enterprises located at 2552 South Cobb Drive in Smyrna, Georgia, to approve all the values determined by the appraisals and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary for the transaction.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Item 7C, 2016-73, is approval of Ward 3, appointment to the planning and zoning board, Park Ellis. This is a two-year term, expires by December 2017. Ms. Terri Nudelwich.
Yes, thank you. I want to, first of all, thank Steve Kemp, the Ward 3 resident, who has served Ward 3 on the Planning and Zoning Committee since 2013. He has done an outstanding job. He's had some conflicts that have arisen with the meetings, and he has decided to move off of the Planning and Zoning Board. He did a wonderful, thoughtful job. He, he put a lot of time and his expertise into every decision that he made on that board, and I'm very grateful for his service. I also want to welcome Park Ellis to the Planning and Zoning Board. Park is part of, he lives in the section of Ward 3 that is actually new to Ward 3. It was previously in Ward 4. And I'm very happy to have representation on, on one of the city's boards from that area and that part of town. And I think Park is going to do a great job. So we look forward to welcoming him to the board this month.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved, seven zero. Item 7D, under formal business, 2016-84, approval of Ward 7, appointment to Smyrna Housing Authority. Terrence, Terri, you can say it, Ron.
Lapierre.
Lapierre. This is a five-year term to expire May of 2020. Mr. Ron Fennell.
Mr. Mayor, it's my privilege. This family, this husband-and-wife team, has gotten heavily involved in our community. I'm proud of both of them. Nancy has gotten herself elected to the Smyrna Arts and Culture Council, and she's taken great responsibility on there. Terri's been very helpful in keeping me honest in, in our neighborhood at Vinings Estates. But I'm grateful that he's willing to serve this sentence, oh, no, it's a term, not a sentence, of five years through May 2020. And Terri, would you mind standing, let the council see? Terri Lapierre, retired cryptologist, I shared that with the group upstairs. And if you want to know what that is, you can ask him after the meeting. But I move approval of Ward 7, appointment to Smyrna Housing Authority, Terri Lapierre, five-year term to expire May 2020.
It's going to be seven oh. You've been here, it'll all be eight oh, nine oh, you've been here for how, how long? I need a second, though. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. But I tell you, seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience, and thank you for your service.
Let's see. Item E is 2016-86, approval of Ward 5, appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board. Sherri Harrington, this is a two-year term, expires December of 2017. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would first like to thank Ed Whittington. He has been serving on the Planning and Zoning Board for the last four years, and I really appreciate his service. And, and as we move forward, I selected Sherri Harrington because she lives on the west side of South Cobb Drive, and a lot of the development going forward will probably be going in that direction. And I felt that it would be good to have representation from that area of South Cobb Drive. So at this time, I'd like to move to approve item, I believe, 7E, 2016-86, approval of Ward 5, appointment to Planning and Zoning Board, Sherri Harrington. This is a two-year term, to expire December 2017.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved, seven zero. Item, item 8 is commercial building permits, we have none. Item 9 is consent agenda. Mr. Jones, would you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Certainly, Mayor. There are six items on the consent agenda for this evening. The first is the approval of the mayor and council meeting minutes from the January 19th, 2016, mayor and council meeting. Item B is consideration and approval of the new personnel policy, EMP 210. It's an employee identification badge, and authorize the mayor to sign the related documents. Item C is the approval of a 10K event for the metro area running club. This is for the Smyrna Village 10K, scheduled for November 19th, 2016. Item D is the approval to use council chambers for a joint town hall meeting to be hosted by two of our council members, council member Fennell and Ron Fennell, and council member Doug Stoner. Item E is approval to use council chambers for Crete Wood at Vinings Annual HOA Meeting. And finally, is approval to use council chambers for Williams Park Neighborhood Annual Homeowner Association Meeting, Tuesday, February 23rd.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved, seven zero. Committee reports will start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennell.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report, except, except to announce that the town hall meeting is this Thursday for that project that I mentioned last time. It's a 72-home, town home development on Camp Island. The three affected neighborhoods, traffic-wise within my ward and the one in Mr. Stoner's ward, have been invited to appear here for a discussion with the developer and the staff Thursday night.
Mr. Stoner.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. I have a couple of things I'd like to say. One of, one of the things that happened this past weekend was the Adopt-A-Mile, and I want to thank all the volunteers that got out there and helped clean up the litter in our city. And I specifically would like to thank the people that cleaned in Ward 5. And again, the La Luz del Mundo Church, which is also the light of the world, had over 30 volunteers Saturday morning, and they cleaned a section of South Cobb Drive from Pat Mel Road down to Powder Springs Street. And I just really appreciate all the work that they've done, and they make a big difference in that part of Ward 5. So I'd like to thank them. And the other thing I would like to mention is the item that we voted on tonight for the road to go from South Cobb Drive at the Glendale Place traffic light there on South Cobb, back to the Old Concord Road. Through that, right now, it's two shopping centers, and I look at it like an asphalt landscape. And it's also dangerous as far as cars and going from that direction to Old Concord. And I think this project that we just are working on will be a great asset and improvement for that part of Ward 5. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to restate something that the mayor mentioned a few minutes ago for the public. The Cobb Landmarks did give the city of Smyrna an award this past Thursday evening, I believe, for the preservation of the Morse Reed House. And I'll give just a very quick summary of what's been going on. We bought this house some eight months ago. We had hired an architect to bring it up to handicap standards, which is required to make it a public use facility, and we have those plans that will be coming back to us this week. Plan on going over it with the council in the next 10 days or so. So things are happening with the house, just to give you a little report on it, and hopefully in the not-too-distant future, we'll open it up to the public for general use. Thank you.
Ms. Terri Nolowicz.
Yes. Thank you so much. Yeah, we do have a couple of things coming up. I'm actually trying to pull up my notes for what I wanted to say tonight, because that's always helpful. But I did want to talk a little bit about the sign variance that we heard tonight. I don't have any problems with fireworks. I don't have any problems with permitted uses, and that's a permitted use for that old Piccadilly location. I don't have any problems really with red roofs. I think that there are other things that we need to concern ourselves with, and that's not a design overlay district right now, so I don't think, you know, I'm glad we didn't spend too much time talking about that aspect of the fireworks store. But during my time on the council, I have been consistent with my opinion of pole signs and roof signs, and while there are lots of pole signs and roof signs that are grandfathered in in Smyrna, we're not going to be adding any new ones. We haven't added any new ones, and we haven't really given any variances, to my recollection, with regards to pole signs, and I don't really support any variances on roof signs. So I wanted to be consistent with that. You know, I wish TNT the best. I certainly want them to be successful, particularly because they have a 20-year lease on that site, so I would like them to be a part of the community and really enhance the area and get that site cleaned up. But I did want to explain why I did not support that variance. Just a couple of other notes. With the vision process, I'm in the process of reaching out to the implementation committee chairs, and I hope to be able to give some updates for everyone at the upcoming council meetings in March. I actually will not be at the next council meeting here in February, I believe. It's the 20th or the 21st, and my daughter has a milestone that she's going to be achieving, and I'm going to be there with her that night. So I will see everyone back here in March. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Your Honor, I don't have anything tonight.
Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of things I wanted to mention. The first is something that I forgot to mention last council meeting that I wanted to report on. And my dad watches these meetings from Toddville, Iowa, and said, "Well, why didn't you mention that meeting with the Braves?" Right after I was elected, I went to go see Mike Plant and talk about their involvement in the community, since they're right across the street, and particularly with Argyle Elementary. Laura and I, my wife, volunteer there, and I thought, boy, that would be great if they could adopt the school or participate in their programs. So they said that they currently have a school down at Turner Field, near Turner Field, that they have adopted, and they'll do the same thing in the community. But we met with the foundation folks afterwards, and at Argyle with Principal Bube, and they talked about not only the Argyle students, but programs for all Smyrna schools, including after-school sports program sponsorships, mentoring programs, teacher appreciation nights, sponsoring field days for different schools, Braves tickets for students of the month, participating in community service projects performed by students, and a myriad of other things. So I'm very excited that over a year out from the first pitch in 2016, they're already looking to see how they can get into Smyrna schools and participate with what we're doing. Second thing, I want to follow up on what Chief Lee mentioned in his report. February 6, the police department will be sponsoring an active shooter class here in City Hall from 2 to 4. And lastly, I saw the work on Spring Road widening beginning, seems like today. It looked like there was some utility work going on. There's a couple of lane closures, so just be cautious as you're going through that corridor from Bell Drive down to 41. With that, I yield.
Mr. Mike Jones, anything else?
I have no report.
Scott Cochran. Mr. Graham, anything else? Item 11, Show Cost Hearing, we have nothing. One person signed up for citizen's input. Alec Bakary, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments.
My first comment tonight is on the water rates and figures for '15. The Water Department made $2,373,243 profit in '15, of which $1,591,127.04 went back to the general fund. Now, government, to me, and many others, is to provide a service. If there's a profit, it should be passed back to the citizens. This has not happened. Example, we've just had another increase starting January 1 of 4%. This profit could have been absorbed in the 4% increase to the citizens. Marietta did it, finding monies, and that was in the paper. They cited the citizens are paying too much for water. Why not Smyrna? Didn't happen. A resident owns a pool. In '09, he was paying $295. Now he's paying $513. That's a 74% increase. The inflation in this country's 2%. Marietta's base rate is $3 compared to ours at 15. When we had two days a week pickup sanitation, we had a rate and reduced it to one day a week. The city did not reduce that rate. It should have been reduced. The base rate, again, for Marietta is $3, and it's $3 per 1,000 gallons, where Smyrna is $3.85. I feel the city should be, and this has happened for many years, on the profit. When you have a profit, you pass it back to the taxpayers in some shape or form, and this 4% easily could have been absorbed. And speaking of the general fund, today, the city paid $631,000 more interest on Hickory Lake's Smyrna Grove. So the taxpayers are out today, an additional, again, $631,000. My second comment was the sad turnout at the last election. 20% voted. Mayor, you said you received 63%. Unfortunately, it's of 20%, and it's just sad that we can not wake up the people in the city that 80% stay home. And I hope this council remembers. You work for us. We do not work for you. I hope this council remembers that. Thank you.
That was the only person that signed up for citizen's input. There's no other bids to be drawn for this body. I declare its adjournment at 9:47.
One second. Thank you.